It's important for us to monitor those classroom compositions to make sure individually the campus, there's not a classroom that is overwhelmed. And so, this initial look though is good news. We feel like with the middle school level, we need to put a little bit more efforts and make sure as we're scheduling kids into that classroom, we're being very intentional. And so, this slide is all about how many new co-teach partnerships we had for this past school year. And so, you can see the challenge here. At the elementary level, almost ninety percent of the partnerships were brand-new this year as compared to the previous year. Eighty percent at the middle school level and eighty-three percent at the high school level. Some of that is because we had, you know, teachers leave due to retirement, resignations, and some of that is that you, particularly at the elementary level, you might have a group of students at a small elementary school and the identified need for co-teachers at a third grade level, for example. Well, the next year, that whole group moves up to fourth grade. And so, typically what we see happening on some campuses is the special ed teacher goes up with those children to the next grade and then a new partnership is created with a fourth grade general ed teacher. That works well, but it's still considered a new partnership because those two teachers need to get to know each other and so on. So, this is an area that we, you know, sometimes we have to start all over if those co-teachers have not had any experiences with the model before. And common planning time is another example, or it's an area that we know as far as when we think about, you know, the co-teach model and what's really important. We know it's important for our two teachers to be in the classroom the whole time bell-to-bell. We know it's important for them to have received training and really understand what collaborative teaching and co-teaching is all about. We know they have to have common planning time in their schedule. And so, within their instructional school day, there needs to be time when the two teachers are able to plan and look at the curriculum. It doesn't need to happen every week, but we need to have it happening regular. And so, one of the things that we saw here, and this is based on teacher reports, and so, but you can see here at the elementary level, eighty percent have common planning time. Middle school, eighty-seven percent, but at the high school, you see it drop off to fifty, you know, about forty-nine percent. So, you know, we've already engaged in conversations with the associate superintendents that oversee the high school level so that we can discuss different ways to ensure that at the high school level, we get that common planning period in, and so, we're going to be working on that this year. So, if you recall, the Renaissance 360 is a new system that we added last year for all students in the district. And one of the value of the Renaissance 360 is that we're able to look at students and see how they're progressing, and one part of that is the growth measure. So, RIN 360, we test kids three times a year, just a very quick assessment using the computer, and we're able to see their growth compared to, you know, their self, right? How they've grown over the year. And so, last year, when we presented co-teach to you, one of the things we talked about is that it was difficult because, you know, we were talking about performance on STAR and we all agreed that STAR performance is not a great way to measure the success of children with disabilities. And so, what's exciting about this is that within the growth indicator with Review 3, I mean, with, sorry, that's another vendor, with Renaissance 360, you can see here, this first pie chart talks about elementary students and how they did with the growth. And so, overall, fifty-seven percent of our elementary students receiving co-teach in the co-teach setting made growth. And so, that's pretty amazing. At the middle school level, you see fifty-two percent of our children made growth, and at the high school level, thirty-eight percent. And one thing I wanted to point out at the high school level is that this number is low and it's maybe not indicative of progress, but many of our high schools did not consistently give the RIN 360 three times a year, so we had a smaller population of children to look at their growth. One other piece about this that I think is really exciting is that if you look at the green percentages, that's above-average growth, okay? So, that means students are really making progress. And you can see there that we had good indicators in each area. So, you know, this is just another good representation of how students receiving co-teach instruction, it really does pay off. In this slide, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on here because this talks about when you're looking at students that are making, you know, we give them those benchmarks three times a year with the RIN 360. This categorizes kids into needing intervention, urgent intervention, and on-watch. You would expect that our students with disability would have a higher need for urgent intervention. I mean, just, it's almost looking at STAR data, like STAR data. We know that kids are not going to do as well on the performance part of STAR. And again, going back to the 360 reading data with STAR, this is another example of, this is saying the kids that were tested that were in co-teach on the RIN 360, that twenty percent of them were at above benchmark with elementary reading and eight percent, only eight percent at middle school, and then twenty-eight percent at high school. And this is really kind of predicting how they'll do on the STAR achievement, which again, we don't think it's as important as the growth indicators in the RIN 360. So, this is the slide, same slide as before, but this is with math. Again, we saw a lot of growth here and even more so in the math area. Sixty-one percent at the elementary level made growth in the area of math, forty-nine percent at the middle school, and forty-seven percent at the high school level. And this is consistent with students without disabilities. We saw growth in math. Okay, and so, this is again talking about intervention with math, and again, this is not as important, I think, as the growth categories for these next two slides, just for the sake of time. Oh, here we go. So, the co-teach approach is, if you recall, when we first started out talking about co-teach, we talked about the different models that you would see in a classroom. And we talked about how initially, when you start co-teach, that you often see a one-teacher, one-assist model, where you see one teacher up, standing and teaching, and another teacher kind of assisting and maybe in the background. Where we really want to be is both teachers using parallel teaching or team teaching strategies. And so, what we saw, and which is really exciting here, is that we saw a reduction this past year compared to the first year in the one-teacher, one-assist, which is what we want to see. We want to see less one-teacher, one-assist and more of the station teaching and team teaching. So, we're headed in the right direction with those partnerships and we are seeing improvement with the instructional model when it comes to the co-teach. And then, our LRE, again, we saw positives with the students that are in the co-teach setting. As compared to the previous school year, we saw improved LRE by sixteen percent. The new, in seventeen, eighteen, twenty-two percent of the special ed students identified as receiving services in co-teach are new to special ed, either brand-new to special ed or new to our district. So, that's pretty exciting. And so, you see, you know, very few are getting more restrictive placements, and then fifty-six percent had no change at all. Overall, we feel like this co-teach implementation has impacted our LRE positively, so we're seeing kids being served in less restrictive environments across the board, so you can see the numbers there going in the right direction. And last but not least, this is a survey that the teachers report about, you know, that they assess themselves in the areas that they think that they need improvement. And so, what's significant about this slide is the instructional planning, again, was the one area that we seem to be having a difficult time making progress as well as we need to be. We continue to have exemplar campuses. One of the things that we're doing at the secondary level is instead of identifying an exemplar campus for co-teach, identifying content. So, we might say, you know, Austin High School has a particular ELA, one teaching, co-teaching team that's amazing, and using that as, you know, a site where other teachers can come visit. We do continue to identify Draybeck Elementary. They're one of the few campuses that have really looped those teachers, like we talked about earlier, for three years in a row. They've had the same teacher with a group of kids and have seen phenomenal results with the co-teach model. So, as we go into this school year, one of the things that we know we want to do at the end of the year is we want to be able to assess each campus and kind of give them a rating about where they are on their co-teach implementation, because we would expect by the end of three years, we should be able to identify where we are at each campus. And so, in order to do that, some of the things that we're going to be working on this year are, you know, earlier monitoring of the data. So, we've been working with the coordinated support plan process, and earlier in the audit, they talked about the special ed report cards, so we'll be having those meetings with principals and developing supports to ensure that we're really looking at data such as the composition of the classroom, such as training, and so on. And then, last year, we stopped, we started doing coaching with our teachers, and that job embedded model did not begin until December, so this year, we're going to be starting that earlier in September. And then, clarifying the expectations, ensuring our staff are utilizing the RIN 360 as a way to measure the growth. And then, really just building capacity with others at the district level, working collaboratively with our associate superintendents on the implementation, as well as at the campus level, building capacity with our teacher leaders and making sure that they understand co-teach so they can assist with the implementation. And that is all.
Thank you, Dr. Hill and Mrs. Maston. Mrs. Tossan, do you have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Berdine. Of course I have a question. Actually, I just, I mostly have comments. I am obviously thrilled that we are doing this and thrilled that we are pushing to get better and better at it, and obviously want to make sure that our teachers are being supported and that our campus administrators are being supported. So, I appreciate you guys continuing with the training and making sure that they have everything they need to make this a successful program for all kids. One, a couple of comments I would make is your numbers on Slide four, the co-teach classroom composition, are not surprising to me, especially at that middle school level. I have heard from middle school teachers who were overwhelmed last year, and I would just like us to continue to monitor that. I don't know exactly how to make sure that that doesn't happen from the district level, but anything we can do to encourage not placing all of those children into one classroom, because it's not only not good for the teacher, it's not good for the students. So, I did want to just highlight that, because I have heard from teachers that they're getting overwhelmed, and that doesn't make for a good environment for any of our kids. Common planning time, we talked about this a lot last year, so I'm really glad to see that we're getting more common planning time. How can we continue to, I don't know if encourage is the right word, but how can we continue to support our high schools to make sure that that is a priority?
Well, and we've talked, in fact, I was talking with one of the assistant supes earlier tonight and how we can collaborate on that, because it's difficult, there's not a report that you can just run. You really have to look into the master schedule and really dig down into that. And so, you know, we're going to be doing that in collaboration with them. I think getting on it earlier, because it's not as difficult to change a student's schedule the first week of school, the second week of school, but, you know, if you get into the eighth and ninth week of school, and that's when you have all this data available, it's difficult to change all the sections. And so, we want to make sure that we can get on it as fast as we can. And then, just continued monitoring. Sometimes the master schedule is difficult when it comes to special education, because, you know, you move this and then you have this, and so, but those are the things that we're going to be doing this year to hopefully get a better handle on it.
Well, and I was trying to think about how we can be more creative in creating those planning times. I know a lot of our teachers tutor before and after school, so I don't know, I don't have any specific suggestions, but I know that in creating that time, when we were working for Abbey, we've tried to brainstorm ways that our teachers could do that. So, that to me is, you know, you list a lot of things that are really important, but that's almost the most important thing. If those teachers cannot plan together, then that, you're not going to have a very effective learning environment. So, I really want us to continue to focus on that. And if our teachers don't have it, then we're not really creating an optimal education or environment for any of them, so.
Well, one thing that we talked about, and I forgot to mention this, is just, I mean, you know, having substitutes for half a day every nine weeks and allowing that planning time if we can't get it into the schedule, and I know that that's, you know, that's a hardship sometimes, but sometimes that's needed.
Well, and we struggle getting substitutes also.
Ready, yeah.
So, I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that would work, but I think creative, I think just brainstorming creative ways like that is a good idea.
I know, one, as you say, creative, we've gone through our first year of Schoology implementation, and so, the Schoology platform does afford teachers to communicate with each other and create Schoology groups. So, aside from meeting face-to-face, there are ways for them to communicate and collaborate via the Schoology platform, so we can certainly develop protocol calls and work with teachers on how to best utilize that platform so that they can collaborate.
Well, that's a good idea, and we've talked about embedding those modifications and stuff like that, and if the teachers can collaborate that way, I'm sure that that would help a lot, so that's a good idea. The last thing on the RIN 360 data, first of all, I appreciate this data, because I know what it means, and it really is important to have this kind of data outside of STAR. So, thank you guys for kind of overseeing implementation of that. And I do, again, at the high school level, which I know is the most difficult level when it comes to special education, and it's the most difficult level for planning and for scheduling and all of those things, because we're experiencing that ourselves right now. But that data is so critically important, not just for us to make sure that, you know, the program we're implementing is working, but for those individual kids to make sure that their IEPs are being effectively implemented. So, that's a piece of accountability that I would really like to see us push for, because the kids, I mean, really, that's critical to their education plan. So, that was the last comment. I also love the special ed report cards. I think, I know Greg mentioned that earlier, and I really like that the campuses get to see how they're doing, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Mrs. Tossan. Once again, we appreciate the data, some great information, and we appreciate the thorough presentation.
And I'm so sorry, I forgot to introduce Sherri Maston, our Director of Special Education, and Stephanie Byrne. Stephanie, stand up. She's our Program Manager, and really, I mean, I could not do this job without them, and they put so much time and effort into this report and monitoring and helping us make progress, so I wanted to acknowledge them tonight.
Thank you, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Next is our Safety and Security update.
Yes, so I asked Police Chief David Ryder to come up and give us an overview of the work of our community-based Safety Advisory Committee.
All right, well, good evening, President Berdine, members of the Board, and Dr. DePree. So, tonight, that's exactly right, we, you know that we've convened the Safety Advisory Committee in April as a result of the shooting in Parkland, Florida. The committee has met nine times, and you've seen this slide before, since they've met nine times since, from April to July. Co-chairs, Mr. and Mrs. Dunlap, we've had over forty members on the committee, from students to staff members, parents, security experts, and the purpose, again, was to research and reach consensus on the ideas that can be added to our existing Safety and Security Master Plan. So, that's what we did, that's what we're going to talk about tonight. What we did, we sent out a survey to each one of the members at the conclusion of our discussion. We vetted fourteen different topics. We sent out a sheet, that, a form that had a summary of each one of those topics, just in case somebody missed a meeting or they had questions. Then, they took a survey, and they gave us information whether they strongly supported the idea, whether they supported it, whether they needed more information, whether they didn't support it, or they strongly disapproved of it. And on each one of those, we asked for comments. We got lots of comments back, even on the ones where they supported it. So, that was a, that was a good, good thing to do. We had forty-two surveys went out, we received twenty-seven back, which is about a sixty-four percent return rate. Not all of them require bond funds, we've talked about that before, and we can talk about that again tonight. And what you're going to see is basically the ranking order from the highest-supported idea to the lowest-ranking support idea. So, first was door locks. You can see that twenty-seven folks answered. Twenty-three were in strong support, moving forward with additional door locks, while four supported it, so all twenty-seven were in the positive. Training for students and staff, there were twenty-two that strongly supported that and three that supported it. One was undecided and one strongly disagreed with additional training. Threat management program, we had all twenty-seven responses were in the positive. Student ID badges, twenty-six out of the twenty-seven were in the positive. The incident reporting platform that we would use on the mobile app on smartphones, we had twenty-four that were in support of that with three that were undecided, but we had no folks that were not supportive of that. For elementary school patrols, we had, again, twenty-four that were supportive. Two were undecided and one was not in support of that. We had the twenty-four in support of an operations center and three that were undecided, but nobody was opposed to it. The threat assessment team, the two police officers that would be part of the threat assessment program, we had twenty-six people that were in support of that, one that was not in support. The child abuse investigator, we had twenty-five that were in support, one was undecided and one did not support that. The school marshal program, we had eighteen that were in support, we had seven that were undecided or needed more information, and two that were strongly against that. Facial recognition, we start to see the support moving down, and the undecided and not support moving up. It's pretty equal across the board. Fencing around the portables, we had fourteen or about half support that, while the other half were either undecided or did not support extra fencing around the portables. We had metal detectors, we had one in support, five that, or one strongly support, five that supported, so six support, six needed more information, and fifteen were not in favor of metal detectors at all. So, that's over half of the folks that returned surveys. And then, allowing staff to carry arms, you can see overwhelmingly, it was not supported. So, let me clarify here, because we have school marshals on here and we have staff that's allowed to carry firearms. The proposal on this, the initial proposal, was to follow a model in Utah, where if you had a license to carry, you were able to carry onto a camp, you were able to carry a gun on a campus, no questions asked, and there's no oversight of that. That's what this is, the allowing staff to carry arms, allowing staff members who have a license to carry, the ability to just carry on a campus without any oversight. The school marshal program is much different than that. The school marshal program allows us to put measures in place where we vet people, that we want to hire as school marshals, we put them through a psychological exam, we train them, they go through qualifications with our police department, and we would have oversight over those folks. So, it's a much different program, and as you can see, the results for each one were much different. Capital outlay, if we implemented these, you can see, these are the bond items that are in Phase One that you've already seen, and we anticipated these were, this was the way it was going to go with the committee. So, fencing, door locks, student ID badges, and police vehicles would need to be in the first phase of the bond, or in the, in Phase One. And non-bond capital funds would need to be found for an incident reporting platform, for police officers, for the marshal program, and facial recognition software if we decided to go with those routes. Again, these are recommendations by the committee to add to our existing Safety and Security Master Plan. These are not implementation plans. I will tell you that work has already begun on some of these. We don't want to be behind the curve very long, so some of the things that we thought were going to be supported by the Safety Committee, we started working on. Some of those things include threat management program. Our district staff has been working to develop a threat assessment tool that we didn't have before, that our campuses will start using when school starts, and that's a positive step in the right direction to getting our threat management program off the ground. Our counselors and our administrative campus-based teams will be able to evaluate and get good information and resources to students, and then eventually, we'll scale up and build into a district-level team. We've already started planning for the training for students and staff. We trained principals and we've given them one-page training documents, handouts that they can take back to their campus and show videos and do tabletop exercises. Next week, myself and two other officers are going to CRAZE Training, which is the Civilian Response to Active Shooter Events, so that we can reach out to the community and teach community members how to respond, and we've already been asked to, we've already got dates on the calendar, and we haven't even been trained yet, so I'm excited about that. ID badges, we've already evaluated multiple vendors, and I would imagine that we're probably coming to you very soon with an ID badge solution. We figured that the committee was gonna, was gonna go that way. And door locks, door locks were overwhelming support. And so, we're already evaluating door lock systems and finding the right company that's going to be the right fit for Fort Ben ISD. And so, again, we'll come back to you with implementation plans as we figure out which ones are going to be the best for our district, but the two items that we feel should not make the list or is not added to the Safety and Security Master Plan are the metal detectors and allowing teachers to carry, to have a license to carry.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Rosenthal.
Thank you, Chief. Actually, I'm happy to see that those two did not make the list, because I did not support those either. And I know somebody, one of us had a question about the fencing, and the question was why did the committee not appear to support that? And so, I can give you my thoughts on that. First of all, and I've brought this up in the past, but it seemed that every time fencing came up, when we asked about what type of fencing would be, it was chain link. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And so, to me, chain link fence doesn't really do much. We just saw yesterday where an eighty-year-old person learning to drive drove right through a chain link fence at one of our schools, okay? So, you can imagine if somebody was actually trying to do that. It doesn't really stop much, it's, they're easy to scale. And I don't even want to bring up other situations, but it's a feel-good thing, but I don't really think it does much as far as actual safety of our kids. And so, that's why I'm against that. If we want to bring up, discuss other types of fencing, then I'm certainly open to that. But if we're just talking about chain link, which I believe is what you built into those bond numbers, then, then I'm not, that's why I'm not for that. So, I don't know who asked the question, but the other thing is the school marshal program. So, I know you and I have had long conversations about this, and I think initially, you were not necessarily in favor. I think we both agree that just allowing anybody, you know, I'm a concealed carry, no, you just can't let anybody just walk in just because, no. I think we strongly reject that. But the marshal program, and it's interesting that all these people are against it when they really don't really know what it is, because, one, it's different, it's whatever, we want to make it, and there hasn't been any plan discussed yet. But we both attended the Anna ISD presentation at Tasby, which was a great presentation. So, they've put a lot of time and effort and really thought things out well. So, the images that get concocted of, you know, teachers carrying Colt 45, you know, pistols on their hip, that's not part of it, okay? That would never be part of it. So, I know people like to bring that up, but that's just not the way it works. Is it possible that some staff members went into school, could go through this training? Would you agree that that is a possibility? Would, would you agree that that is, that is a possibility?
Well, I think that's a possibility. I, I think what we would, you know, wha- what I would like to see happen being, I, I'm sure that we would probably own the program. Um, I, I would like to see somebody who's mobile in the school. I don't see, um, in, in my opinion, I don't see that a school marshal does as much good if they're in a classroom, uh, with a bunch of students. I think it's somebody who needs to be able to be mobile. Uh, but, but at the same time, their responsibility is not to go hunt somebody down if something happens.
Exactly.
Their responsibility is to protect those around them.
And the, and the folks at Anna ISD stress that, that they said that they don't want their, their people leaving the classroom. So I, I would agree with you on that, but it, but it doesn't preclude that there may be some staff people who go through the training that, that may be armed on campus, okay?
A possibility and, and again, we, we don't have an implementation plan.
Exactly, right. So that's why I'm, you know, I, I'm listening to people that are, you know, opposing the marshal plan, but there isn't even a plan yet. So, um, so that's something that, that you guys need to come up with at, at some point. And, um, you know, I'm glad that you got to see that presentation and, and, uh, I think they would be a valuable resource. In, uh, in, because they've done it, they've already, they've already implemented it and I thought they had some great ideas. Um, you know, a lot of the things about, well, the police don't know who they're, who they're shooting and whatnot, you know, I, I, I don't buy that because that's, uh, that can be anywhere. I mean, that could be in any situation. Um, so there's just, I, I think it needs to be well thought out and, and I'm sure that, that you guys will do that. But I'm, I'm glad that, that we're open to, to having the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Mr. Rice.
Thank you, Mr. Burdine, and thank you, Chief, for another excellent presentation. Uh, all of us here appreciate your dedication and commitment to Fort Ben ISD and the professionalism and the training that you've brought to all of our police officers. And, Mr. Rosenthal, although we do agree on many things, I disagree with you on the school marshal program. And I think if we're gonna have school marshals, I would rather have police officers, just as we already have some. Uh, because I believe anyone who is drawn into the teaching profession, their heart is first and foremost in the teaching profession. And, uh, although it, it pains all of us to acknowledge the state of our civilized society and why some people commit these horrible acts. Uh, you sir and your officers are trained and you go to bed at night knowing you may have to take some sort of action the next day. And that's something that you're trained and that's why you're in law enforcement and not a teacher, although you do te- do, you do teach. So that is why, uh, at the moment, and I haven't seen the plan, but fundamentally, uh, I think we need less guns on campus and not more. And secondly, I, uh, for you, Dr. Dupree, I was speaking to Dr. Randall, who, as you know, is participating in the Holesworth Academy. And they are focused on spending time and money with their counselors, particularly in middle school and high school, to identify troubled youth. Some children who may exhibit signs of emotional turmoil and distress, cutting, something I've learned about. In a way to intervene. Now, of course, that would be an intervention with students, with youth. It's, could not, of course, uh, take into account a fully grown adult who commits a terrible crime. But it's a start. And shortly after you arrived, Dr. Dupree, we knew that from the budget cuts that we had sustained in two thousand ten and eleven, most of our elementary school counselors were serving as proctors for this, that and the other. And they were very disenfranchised because that's not why they got into the teaching profession. And some were leaving. And so we did find a way to bring in some paraprofessionals, as I recall, Dr. Dupree, which then allowed the counselors to actually do some counseling. Of course, at the end of the day, all it takes is money. And I'll have some comments on that later on tonight, but, uh, I, I, I just wanted to share those thoughts with you. I appreciate you and, and the work that you do and the, the dedication that you and your officers bring to our school district. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Mrs. Tosan. Patty, you wanna go next? Mrs. Helliger, sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Tosan. Thank you, um, Chief, for the good presentation. I really appreciate the information and to the committees as well for taking the time to, um, prepare our students in our schools for safety. I just wanted to, uh, I think really what I wanted to say, Jim has already said it, and I really wanted to piggyback on that. Um, today's points of why we were, why people would, um, speak against this particular item of the school marshal is, is from the fundamental approach around teachers having, um, guns at school. And I do worry, and I haven't seen the plan yet, but I do worry about some of the things that were presented earlier, myself. And, um, I just feel that, um, I would prefer to have more chiefs, um, um, patrol in our schools. Um, and I, and I, and I remember joining our summer leadership institute, I sat in some of the programs on, on the school marshal program. So I was a little more enlightened about the program and, and it intrigued me. But then when I had to step back and really evaluate what I feel like is best for all of our kids and my kids, you know, um, I just feel like it's important for me to have more of officers in the, in the schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Helliger. Mrs. Tosan.
Thank you, Mr. Burdine. So I, I really appreciate all the work that you and the committee, um, both, uh, Mr. Rosenthal and Mr. Burdine also served. So I, I was the board president when that committee convened and it, you know, as, as a parent, as frightened as we get when these types of things are happening, when you're, um, the superintendent and the board president or even a board member, the pressure is enormous when you feel like you have responsibility for all of the children in your district. So, um, I just wanna say that I personally felt that and I know the other board members did as well. And these decisions are extremely difficult because, um, you just wanna do what's best for the kids. You, you really just wanna keep them safe and a lot of people believe a lot of different things. We've gotten emails on both sides of this, um, and it's been really, you know, really a difficult decision, I know, for me personally. My first question is, is the board gonna vote on these recommendations?
Um, back in two thousand fourteen, the board did not actually approve, I don't, I think, correct?
No.
They did not actually approve the security plan. Um, the board did act on the various components as they were brought forward for implementation. So we were planning to go down that same path unless the board gave us other direction.
My only thought about that is, is I know that we vote, as, I know we didn't, we didn't approve that plan per se. And I know that different pieces of it were brought to us as expenses were had. I just wanna make sure that, um, I know some of these, uh, recommendations don't involve expenses, don't involve money outlay. And I personally just wanna make sure that, um, the board has an opportunity to weigh in. Because as Mr. Rosenthal and Mr. Rice and Ms. Helliger just did, um, I, I don't know what kind of funds are gonna, we're gonna need for this particular program, but we may wanna, you know, and I know this is a chance for us to have a conversation about it, but I think we need to make sure that the board is on board with some of this um, before we take steps to move forward. So I just kinda wanted to say that at the outset. Um, this, the safety and security plan previously really didn't dive into this type, these types of issues where we're talking about arming teachers or putting guns on our campuses and that kinda thing. So I just feel a little angst as a board member to make sure that all board members' views have been heard and that we've had an opportunity to weigh in on that.
If I might, I think, you know, again, we're always open to the board's direction, but my initial thinking is there are two avenues the board would have feedback. One, at this point, these are simply ideas. And they will be incorporated into the actual plan with much more spelled out timelines, those kinds of things. So we would be presenting that back to the board publicly, be able to have the conversation. Some things would also require policy changes. So that would be another avenue the board would weigh in. So I think if we kinda moved down the path toward developing the plan, bring that to the board, maybe the board could be at that point, a little more insightful about whether they would like to take action at that time or if they wanted to, you know, look at policy independently or how, how the board would like to move at that point.
Okay, I appreciate that. I just wanted to make sure that we had an opportunity to weigh in on some of these. So I wanna ask you, why were you not in favor of the marshal program initially, if that has changed?
Well, uh, um, you know, when you, when you don't know what you don't know, uh, you know, the marshal program was a new, uh, was a new idea, um, just a few years ago. And, uh, having served in school district law enforcement for twenty-one years and six in a city police department before that, um, I wasn't, uh, necessarily in favor of having somebody else with a gun on our campus. And I completely understand that from our community standpoint. Um, but I also understand that we're in a different day and time. So the standards that we apply to school safety this year, I can't apply those, I can't apply the standards from nineteen ninety-seven when I got into school district policing to today's environment. It's changed. Um, and so as our environment changes, I, I think we need to think, uh, differently. Um, and, and I'm not saying that I'm, um, I'm more for it now than I was before, but I still want some more answers. Uh, you know, I, and, and, and that's the thing with all these, and I think you just said it. Uh, m- my problem is I'm a people person, right? So I wanna please everybody, but I can't here.
Right.
Uh, no matter what we pick, no matter what we come to you with, some people are gonna be upset and some people are gonna be happy. Um, and so just like you said, at the end of the day, we have to do what's best for the students and, and we have to move forward on that. Um, and maybe the school marshal program is not the best thing. Uh, I, I think we need to get into that implementation. I think we need to dig into it. I think we all need to be comfortable with what those plans look like. Um, and we're certainly not gonna try to sneak something by you. I would never do that. Um, we're gonna make sure that you are completely on board with everything that we do here, uh, because it impacts every single student and every single staff member and parent in our community. Um, but you know, when you look at the, when you look at the rankings on here out of fourteen items, even though the school marshal had some support, it was still ten out of fourteen.
Right.
So it's, you know, it's not like it was number one on the list and that's, and that's really what we're focusing on. So I think, I think in, in my opinion, what we're gonna focus on are the ones that was, that were highly supported. Um, things that we can do pr- pretty quickly. Um, some of these things rely on the bond. Uh, so we're gonna have to wait and see what happens with the bond. Um, but other things that don't rely on the bond, we can start moving on some of those, uh, like I mentioned earlier, so.
If I might interject on what Chief has said, I, Mr. Rice alluded to this about what's happening in Lamar. And I think I wanna, because we're spending a lot of time, it's, the, the gun issue has been a big topic in the community. But our conversations, and we have talked to every district leader, our PD is involving these conversations with staff as we begin the school year. The real work we have to do is all the preventative work to identify the risk when children are in elementary and middle and high school and identify those children who are at risk of becoming the shooter. We're always gonna have that, those people who are outs- out of school, who still may choose to do harm. But the data is showing us there are many young people, if someone would have touched them and helped them, they would have never made, taken that step. So I don't want that important, that is the big rock out of all of this, that we are focusing on. And, uh, whether we have marshals and all that, that's an important conversation, but I just wanna make sure that anyone listening to this conversation knows our efforts are spent trying to do the social, emotional engagement, touching the kids, helping them not ever want to cross that line into harming themselves or others.
Well, thank you and thank you, Chief, for that response. You and I have had that conversation before, so I sort of felt like that's, that, you know, that, why you felt the way you felt. I felt like I knew that, um, and I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but I think it's important for us to hear that. Um, and so I, you know, I feel, uh, maybe I split the baby, maybe I don't. Maybe what I agree with is more Mr. Rice and Ms. Helliger, although I, I really, I mean, guns are already on our campuses because you guys are on our campuses. So, and, and I don't feel comfortable with staff being armed. Uh, mostly because I want staff to be focused on their job in that school. Whether it's teaching or being an administrator or a counselor or whatever their job is. I don't want any attention diverted to any other role. Um, so I would be really interested in hearing, um, when we get to it, what your recommendation would be if we had a program like this. Um, and I feel, uh, probably a lot like Mr. Rice and, and Ms. Helliger, that I would want it to be, uh, not, not a person, uh, on campus who's already a staff member, but someone who's law enforcement trained. I mean, you guys are already there. Um, and the reason that you're there is for protection and to keep order. And, uh, and that's what I feel most comfortable with, I think, right now. So I'll just put that out there. Um, I also had on my list the same thing Mr. Rice talked about and Dr. Dupree you just addressed, is that I really think we do need, I mean, I don't know if it's appropriate for it to be part of the safety and security plan, but I sort of feel like that sometimes it's the front lines of safety and security is to make sure that we are staffed to support our students. Um, I, my kids happen to go to a couple of the schools that got the most threats, copycat threats last year, and some of them were credible. Um, and those were kids, those were students, they weren't adults, they were students. So we have to make sure that we, we should know who those students are already, right now, before they ever do that. And we should already be intervening, cause the teachers know, you can ask them, they know. So I do wanna make sure that that's part of our plan somewhere along the lines. Uh, it feels like it fits in safety and security, even though I know it's outside of, of the police department in your realm. But I, I do think that that's sort of a frontline strategy that we need to be considering.
Well, yeah. Well, actually, I think that's part of the threat management program that we're discussing.
Okay.
And that's exactly what Dr. Dupree was talking about, was taking the time to identify those and, and, and then getting them resources and help. And, and, you know, we wanna be sh- be sure that if somebody's in the seventh or eighth grade and then they transition to ninth and tenth grade, who's telling the high school? You know, we wanna make sure that there, that there are resources that are giving them, the student and their family, um, attention and help, uh, throughout the rest of their educational career, so they don't fall through the cracks or they don't feel like somebody is paying attention to them or, uh, doesn't care about them. And, and so absolutely, that's part of our, that's part of the program we wanna develop.
Okay, thank you for that explanation. My, my last comment is just about the fencing. So I, I read all of the comments by, um, those who took the survey. Um, and, you know, hearing Mr. Rosenthal talk about it, I sort of felt the same way. I mean, at first, it, it felt like a no-brainer, fence the portables. And then as I got to thinking about it, what is that really doing? Are we, is that really, is, are we really helping? So, um, I know that's included in, you know, phase one of the bond that we're gonna be voting on tonight. Um, and I, I guess I would just like to hear, is that something that, I mean, I assume it's your recommendation that we do that. Can you address some of the comments about the fencing?
Yeah, sure can. So again, if you're looking at the rankings, fencing was twelve out of fourteen. Again, not a lot of support, um, even though it had more support than, than, than people against it. There are some concerns with fencing. A, just like you talked about the chain link, you know, whether it's six foot or eight foot, whether it's scalable or non-scalable. Um, what kinda, we would have to have panic hardware at the gates, uh, so that people could one motion and get out. Um, but that also creates choke points.
Right.
Um, just like we talked about with metal detectors, creating choke points on the outside of the school, fencing is gonna create choke points on the inside. And I've had some specific emails from parents about specific schools, and Ridge Point was one of them. And I drove out to Ridge Point and the comment was fence the portables. Well, first of all, portables are in two different locations in Ridge Point and in one section, they're right up against the sidewalk.
Right.
Um, in another section, they're up against the building. And so if we fence that and let's say a portable's on fire, the main building's on fire, which is much more likely to happen, um, then we have students running towards the main building that's on fire to get out of a fence cause the sidewalks normally go that way, right? Um, as opposed to being able to just exit the door and get away from all the buildings, uh, out into the grass or across the street. So there, there are considerations, um, you know, we move a lot of portables during the summer, every summer. So if we put fencing around the portables, now we're gonna have to take the fencing down to move portables. And then we're gonna have to rebuild the fence and that's gonna be a yearly process. And so, um, you know, a- again, it, homeowners associations, uh, also may dictate what type of fencing we have to put up. But we also wanna be equal across the board. So if we put wrought iron fence with pressed tips to keep people from climbing over and it's curved and it's real nice at the top with brick pillars. So if we put wrought iron fence with pressed tips to keep people from climbing over, and it's curved and it's real nice at the top with brick pillars every ten feet, and I'm not the construction guy, maybe that's not right at ten feet, but if we do that for one school, then I think we need to do it for all of them.
And then we can't move that.
And then we can't move it. So, um, you know, there, there are a lot of considerations with that. And just like you said, i- it sounds like a no-brainer in the beginning, but when you start looking into it, um, you know, I, I think there are some things that we need to discuss. I think there are things we need to work through. And even though it has some support here, um, I, I think, I think it's still, uh, there are still pros and cons, uh, to, to everything on this list.
Well, I had some concerns too about the elementary school kids because it's scalable for the older kids or for an adult or for somebody to get in. But certainly the little kids can't get out.
Mm-hmm.
So if, I mean, heaven forbid, if we ever had someone in that wanted to do harm, how would they, I mean, I don't know. I just started brainstorming scenarios and got a little more concerned about that.
And that's what we do. We brainstorm scenarios and we play the what-if game and we work through that. And we did that on the committee over and over and over. And, um, so even though it has support, I think there's some, uh, uh, I think there's some, uh, good points to having fencing on the bond, uh, so that we can fence areas that need it. Uh, there are some places, maybe around a playground, or maybe we need to complete a section of fence. Um, but, uh, maybe we don't need to do an entire school. Maybe we don't need to do all the way around portables at, at certain schools. So, um, I, I think there's some validity to keeping that in. Um, but, but we would need to address that on a case-by-case basis.
All right. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mrs. Tosan. Mr. KP George.
Uh, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burdine, and thank you for this presentation. And, and absolutely, um, uh, what I wanted to say is already been, uh, said. And, uh, obviously, I'm glad, uh, both, uh, the last item didn't make, uh, to the consideration list. And obviously, one of the reasons I'm not, I'm also not supportive of, uh, the school marshal program because I talked to a lot of people and, including teachers, and, and they are the one on the ground. And I asked them, how do you feel about it? I started from my house, you know, like I have a teacher in-house, so talked to her. They always said, uh, everybody said, we feel safe when we see somebody in uniform. And, and I feel the same way. So I believe, um, uh, because of that same reason, um, I believe I, I cannot support that program personally. Um, and also another thing here, uh, we mentioned about, uh, threat assessment, uh, team. Can you elaborate on that? What does that exactly mean?
You bet. So, um, just like we have a campus-based team that, that, that I was talking about earlier with that campus-based tool. We want to dis, we want two district teams, this is our, our thought process at this point, to have two mobile district teams. Could be licensed professional counselors, uh, maybe a psychologist, a police officer that's trained in critical incident, uh, I'm sorry, uh, crisis intervention, uh, training. Um, and, um, tho- those folks would go out. So let's say a student, uh, give me an example, it's the easiest way to explain it. So a student makes a threat on a campus. The campus does their initial assessment. It's a serious threat or very serious threat. That would then be transferred to the district level team to allow that campus to go back and focus on campus-related events instead of trying to follow up with a very serious threat. The district team would take that over, and the district team would then follow up and, uh, almost become like a case manager type, type, uh, situation where they, where they provide resources to the parents, get resources to the child, and then follow up with them throughout their career here.
Right. And, and one of the thing it is, it's important, I, I, I don't know if you recall, maybe last year, you know, one of the student approached me and said, um, you know, they've been complaining about certain students and they were never taken seriously. And at the end, I sent that email to Dr. Dupree and forwarded to you, and you took care of it. My point is, how do you train, um, counselors and people like that? When somebody come, somebody says something like that, not to take it lightly. Maybe we don't know. And so how do you train them? Because this student was very frustrated. He met me somewhere, uh, where I went and he said this, we are very frustrated about it. Nobody, basically they said nobody care, kind of thing. But that is not true. We do care. And, uh, so how do we make sure when somebody says something, whether there is something in it or not, without making a judgment, we look into it?
Mm-hmm. Well, I, I think you're right. We do care. And, and I think the, the thing that we're looking to do is standardize our process. So we don't have seventy-eight campuses doing seventy-eight different things. And so that's where we put in the threat assessment tool. Uh, our staff has worked hard over the last month or so putting that in place. Uh, and I think that's being rolled out first day of school. Um, and so when we have a standardized process, then the campus-based team can, can talk to the person that, that makes the report. And there are a series of questions, uh, interviews that have to take place, and there's a lot of checkboxes on there to make sure that everybody's doing everything they're supposed to do. And then once they determine, once they answer all those questions, um, then they can determine whether or not that threat is credible, whether it's a low-level, medium, or high-level threat. Um, and then we can go to the next step from there.
And you touched, it's all about having a system in place so that, so when they hear something, they can, they can follow through on that. But overall, it is absolutely, I'm happy about, um, this whole presentation and looking forward to hear more details and specifics. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. George, and Mrs. James.
Thank you, Mr. Burdine, and, uh, thank you, Chief Rider, for the hard work of your, of the task force or committee and organizing all of these ideas and bringing this report to us. So, um, I just want to touch on some of the things my colleagues said. One is, Mr. Rosenthal, I was the one who asked the question about the facial recognition software and about the fencing. And I didn't understand that which of the things that the, that, uh, we were recommending going forward or what was going to be added to the safety and security plan versus what wasn't. And so it seemed like if all of these things were being added, why were we doing it when a lot of people said no, that they weren't interested? Um, so that was sort of where that came from. But to pick up on the fencing, so I also went through the mental exercise of, well, fencing, what does it do for us? It could create more problems than it solves. Initially, I had thought, okay, let's fence around the schools. We'll keep the, the playground balls in, the dogs out. And, you know, maybe that'd be helpful, but in a more serious situation like a fire, um, or an active shooter, it might not be the right, the safest way. So I appreciate you guys giving some more thought to that. And, um, I think the same thing applies to the facial recognition software. Because once you recognize that the bad guy's in the school, what good is it? I mean, probably someone already knows that because, or maybe not, but I, I don't know. So anyway, that was just, that was just the thoughts that crossed my mind. So I like the idea of us, of you going back and looking at the overall, enveloping the overall plan a little bit more. And, um, and then giving us a chance to look at it again, you know, maybe after a little time has passed and maybe how, we've seen how the school year starts up. So I like that idea that several of my colleagues brought up. I also like building in the mental health awareness and the, um, the building relationships part of the educational process so that we can be sure we know, um, we can identify the threats. Um, I guess my one thing that I wanted to clarify on the incident reporting platform, you mentioned that that was an app. One of the things that I think's really important is that students, teachers, people have a way to report something without speaking. So if they observe something in a classroom or in a hallway or something, that they can report it without being obvious. This is why I've mentioned about the texting, because kids do, they're doing that all the time, whether they should be or not. And so they can tech, they could, if they had a number to text to, they could text and alert, hey, there's a kid acting strange in second period, and that could be identified. So does this app meet that need and how, could you tell us a little bit more about it?
Absolutely it does. That, that's, that's what we want. And there are several apps out there. And so we would, uh, we would evaluate which one works best for us. Um, we've got some, we've got some ideas in mind, but again, there are more questions to be asked. Uh, but I want something that's customizable to Fortman ISD, something that meets our needs. I don't want a generic app that goes to the state somewhere and then gets filtered down to the city and then down to the school district. I want something that comes to us. I want something that gives us real-time information. Uh, I want something that students or, or teachers or staff members or parents who are visiting our-